All right, I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority, please. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Here.
Sebo.
Here.
Morrell.
Here.
Sterling.
Here.
Johnson.
All right, it's May 7th at 6:15. I do declare a quorum. We'll have an invocation this evening by Councilman Ahern.
Thank you. If you guys will pray with me. Father, we just want to pray very briefly, but thank you so much for weather. We thank you for this community that you have brought us to. And in this meeting tonight, Father, we know that you were present. We are asking, though, that you be extra present as we continue to move this community forward and that everything that we do tonight, whether we, how we speak to one another, how we listen to one another, may we always, always glorify your name. It is in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. You have before you the consent agenda. It's just one item. I may...
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular PMI, April 16, 2018.
Second.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Thank you. Comments from those assembled? Anyone in the audience have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to proclamation, commendation, reports by the governing body. Anything pertaining to the authority? Seeing none. Any new business that needs to become, come before the authority this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
I would call the order of the regular meeting of the City Council of Perry. It is 6:17 on May 7th. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Here.
Sebo.
Here.
Morrell.
Here.
Sterling.
Here.
Johnson.
I do declare a quorum also. You have your consent agenda. It's a little bit longer. It's A through L. If there's anything we need to look at, not, we'll...
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled. Any comments about the meeting, this evening, council meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, proclamations, commendations, reports required by the governing body. None?
So we had a good car show. Really appreciate everything everybody did for that.
I thought it was pretty impressive myself.
Car show.
All right. Item six, report from the city manager. None? Item number seven. Consider appointment to the planning commission for the commission seat. Apparently, Michelle Williams that we appointed a few weeks ago has accepted a position in Edmund. I understand her husband has left our fire department also and has went to be a firefighter in Guthrie. So, that being said, I haven't talked to Larry, but your remarks here, it says Marvin DeMint has agreed to stay over in the position that he was holding. So, if you guys don't have anyone else to nominate, I guess we'll just reappoint Mr. DeMint to the position.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. All right, item number eight, consider approval of ordinance number 2018-08 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending chapter five, article one of the Perry Municipal Code 2018 supplement by the addition of a new section, 5-114, entitled Temporary Storage Containers or Similar Structures Within the City of Perry and Providing For the Use by Review, Building Permits, Penalties, Exceptions, Providing for Repealer, Savings, Codification, Severability, Penalty, and Declaring an Emergency. Okay, I'm going to refer to our legal counsel on this because I don't know the details behind this.
Well, you've seen this. The planning commission has seen this, and then you saw it again, and then it went back to the planning commission, and now it's recommended for approval back here. You know, we've changed the word pods to temporary storage containers. It's really talking about those containers that are normally used as shipping containers that are found on boats and big barges and railroad, railroad cars. It's going to allow them to be used here as temporary storage pursuant to a permit, or if folks go through the use by review process, it could be used for other purposes on certain zoned property. It can be used in industrial property at all times, and the ordinance doesn't apply to government property. It's allowing something that up till now hasn't been allowed, but you have to go through a process in order to do it. And that is, you know, I think that that's right. I think that you need to judge what the, what the neighborhood thinks, because, you know, they can become unsightly, but on the, on, on a properly sized property and a proper use, why not permit them? That's what this is.
Is there anything that's different other than...
No.
The terminology?
No. Other than pods.
That promote...
Being, being changed. Yes, it's the same as what you saw before. There was one phrase that was repeated twice, and, and it was omitted because it didn't make any sense. So, there was some nonsense taken out of it, too, but no, nothing, nothing material.
We'll be looking for approval of motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2018-08.
Roll call, please.
Morrell. Oh, sorry. Calderon.
Yes.
I almost answered that.
I just...
Yes.
Gilbert. Yes. Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes.
Motion on emergency?
Second.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, item number nine, declare the buildings and appurtenances... I've worn that word today, from the legal counsel. Located on the real property of the former Regency End as surplus property and no longer useful for any municipal purpose. The way I understand this is we've removed all properties and appurtenances and things that, that we want to keep, and so now we're looking for the place to be demolished and torn down, and there's someone that's going to do that for us.
You get to read it again on the next one.
Yeah, and no cost, so.
Motion approved.
Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. All right, consider, item number 10, consider the approval of demolition contract with Blue Badger Investments of Perry LLC for the demolition and removal of buildings and appurtenances of the former Regency End real property. Same thing as item nine, these are the people that's going to tear it down. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. All right, item number 11, consider approval of ordinance number 2018-11 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, providing for a setting of maximum speed limit of 20 miles per hour at March Bank Street, and directing the city manager or his designee to erect appropriate signage to notify the public, provide for repealer, savings, penalty, severability, and declare an emergency. Apparently, the way I understand it, March Bank Street is up towards the north end of town. It goes to the east off of Seventh Street, and someone's been complaining because there's been people speeding down that street, and this is the way that our law enforcement can enforce the lower speed limit, so.
Is this a request coming from most of the people, or one, one person on here, or do we know?
It came, it came to Larry. I recommended that we send that to the planning commission to kind of look at it, and David Payne, the planning commission advisor, said this is more a, a city council issue and not a planning issue, and so I just, I did an ordinance. It's a dead-end street, correct, Chief?
Yes.
And there's eight houses that...
Ten.
There's 10 houses that, that are there.
Is it about, it's about a block, maybe a block and a half long?
Yeah, I drove it today, and I'd be stretching it if I, if I got up to 30 miles an hour by the time I was all the way through it, but it's, it's up to the neighborhood to say whether they want to.
I personally have seen a motorcycle cranked up pretty good. You know, they turn that corner and just nail it, go. So I don't, I don't know if that's what it was that caused this. I don't know any details behind it.
We, of course, could send letters to the property owners there. We could, we could do that and then bring it back to your next meeting, but I was just directed to put it on this, so I prepared an ordinance, and here it is.
You know, it's, it's hard for law enforcement to even run radar because it is a closed street, but I would recommend whoever's making that complaint, let us know. As a citizen, they can make a citizen's complaint, sign a citation, come to court and testify that they seen the act if somebody is driving reckless down that street, because we can't be there all the time.
But they can't prove what the speed limit, or what their speed was, can they?
No, but she can come, whoever's seeing this, if there is people speeding, let us know. We'll go up and say, they can walk right up there with us like an officer and make a citizen's arrest, like a complaint, write the citation, they can come to court and show the judge.
Bryce, I'd like to send letters to those people and find out, other than just throw this on there, because, I mean, it sounds like to me it'd be nearly impossible unless you're sitting out there...
It's kind of what law...
Facing the wrong direction, and you're going to be seen anyway, so.
We refer to that as fishing or biting sometimes, but we can't be there all the time. I mean, that's a closed street. We're going to patrol it, but we just can't, to catch that certain individual, it'd be almost impossible. We just have to be at the right place at the right time. That's why I'm asking the citizen to call in on it.
Maybe it would be easier for us just to approve it and sit back and wait. If there's people unhappy, they'll tell us.
Well, an ordinance is a permanent enactment, you know. Of course, you can repeal it. So, you know, there's, there's, there's no problem with delay and, and send the folks there a letter and say, somebody here requested this. What do you think? And, and bring back the response that we got, you know? Include a letter back to us with a stamp on it, you know? Please include whatever, you know, response you want.
If there's 10 houses on it, you'll get two letters back, maybe.
Well, I'd rather give them the opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, because this could also happen, you know, you could report.
No, I agree on this. I wouldn't expect to get much back.
If it was an open-ended street, it'd be a different deal, but being as how it's a, a dead end, I can't see any way that you can reasonably patrol it.
I'd like to make a motion to table until we get more information on item number...
11.
11, I'm sorry.
Would you, would you make any of that motion that we send letters to?
Yes.
Yes, and, and send correspondence to the residents.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Morrell.
Yes.
Sterling.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item number 12. Item number twelve, consider approval of the sixth option to the municipal solid waste collection and disposal contract with Davis Sanitation. The way I understand this is that there's a, we've had, we've, we've used all of our options, I mean, our, our continuations to this contract, but Mr. Davis has agreed to continue on without any increase to his services, like the other, the five, we always had a two percent increase, he's agreed to stay where he's at. There is a couple check provisions, and one of them is that it wants to be a new rate, it looks like for a thirty, or maybe a rate for a thirty-yard roll-off. Bryce said something to me about that he would set his rates, and then we would be able to set our rates on top of that, so if we wanted to change, if we wanted to charge more for it, we could. And then, option number two is a provision permitting the city to contract with a third-party recycler for, if we wanted to recycle or something, I understand that Larry wanted that on the agenda.
He has a recycling provision in his contract, it's, it, it just says that he will set out, you know, containers and collect there, but there's, hasn't been a whole lot of interest. He does take steel and metal out at the community center, and he'd like to continue to do that, and, and he's, and he's also talking about if somebody wants him to get a trailer and work with the Boy Scouts, or perhaps now the Scouts, you know, on like can pickup, and, and they wanted to do can pickup out there, and everybody bring their cans out there and use the money for a project, he would do that, and he came and met with Larry and said, you know, whatever you want, but Larry wanted a provision here, so we provided for that. This apparently is Watley, and Watley wants a thirty-yard roll-off rate there, so we'll set the rate, it'll be above, because this is a flat contract, I think thirty-eight thousand some odd dollars per year, and, and he thought that was a big enough deal that we can charge our rate, make it a little bit more than, than what he, he's charging Watley, we'll actually do the charging and paying. He, we actually have five options left, we did ten options, and so we have five options left, but the option provides that we go up two percent, and, and, and he's agreed to do it for nothing. So, I, I kind of talked to him, said that we didn't have any money, it would be really nice if he did, but this is the second year in a row, and, you know, we ought to, we ought to give him credit for that.
So, this one does not even have a two percent?
There is, there is no increase, there's no increase at all, so.
Does he collect battery, used batteries?
There is, there, I have seen batteries laying out there at the community center.
And does he also do the used oil and?
There is a tank down there, there used to be, I haven't been out there in several months, but there used to be a tank where you can dispose of used oil out there.
Are we sure the sign doesn't say you can?
There was a tank out there, and I have disposed of oil out there before.
I thought, it's been a long time since I said and read the sign, but I think the sign says something about, well, not being permitted, but it's hard to talk about because it's been so long since I looked at it.
So, is there, is there a place then for residents?
It is not in the, it's not in there, Bryce.
It is, you've looked.
To take cardboard and things like that, like what you're talking about? There's not.
There's not. Larry's the one, Larry wanted that in there because I believe that it's in, in the contract that we have with Davis, that we could recycle, he wants to investigate the ability to, to be able to recycle. Now then, my neighbor, I was at her place the other day, and she had some cans or something there, and she, and some plastics, and I said, what are you doing? She said, they're gonna drop off some recycle bins to me, I don't know who did that. I didn't ask her who was dropping them off, but someone did drop off some.
The Ponca Tribe, yeah, I think that's who he wants to talk to, the Ponca Tribe, and set up something where the Ponca Tribe will, so, so we will be able to do recycling on plastics, cans, paper, cardboard, we have that exception under there, and Larry thinks that we can get a contract with the Ponca Tribe or with somebody to do that, that will be specific, because the whole thing there is if you're gonna do it, you've got to have an end user, you gotta have it set up, and, and we did do it here, and everybody used the containers, and then, and then Davis came and put everything that was in the container in his trash truck and took care of it, took care of disposal for us, so.
Well, there was containers set around, there was one over here, there was one at the elementary school.
Yeah, but it was also. Well, yeah, but when Davis did it, they were all, it was, they were all picked up, I assure you, they were all picked up and properly disposed of, but I don't think it was recycled. Now, what Davis said, he said, what folks don't understand is that, you know, recycling will occur, and it will occur, it's just gonna occur out of my landfill, and it's gonna be, you know, a hundred years from now, there's gonna be mining in the landfill for product, and that's when recycling will, will happen, it's kind of a joke, but I thought about it, and thought, you know, he's probably, he's probably right, you know, there, there probably will be in, in the future, so.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second. Roll call please.
Colar.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebo. Yes, Morel.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. All right, item number thirteen, consider Oklahoma Water Resources Board Clean Water Act funding for local match required by the citywide sanitary sewer phase number three project. All right, we had some pretty extensive talks about this today. If you notice in the, in the information that's underneath this item, at our last meeting, we talked about how much money we had left in that account, and Russ, we talked to Russ, and he, he kind of threw, I don't remember what it was, seventy-five thousand dollars or something, and, and Ms. Meredith come up with about another hundred and twenty thousand dollars for us. So, anyway, so we have, you, you can see, we have a hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars in there, which leaves us short three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. We have a bond proceeds of six hundred and ten thousand dollars, which was when we renewed our bonds, extended them.
Street.
Was it the street bonds?
Yeah, that's the one that has six hundred and fifty thousand, in, in that, in that separate capital improvement account.
Yeah, and so, the three hundred and seventy-one thousand would come out of that. Now, Russ isn't too excited about us spending any more money out there, because we're about out of money, and, so we really got to talking about this today, and this is for phase three of the sewer project, okay? There's a phase four that is, runs down the creek south of Wakefield, I don't know exactly how far west or east it goes, it goes past Seventh Street, I know, maybe all the way over to seventy-seven. With that, and the wastewater treatment plant, serious issues we have, that's a million dollars just for phase four, and, so we talked about today possibly changing our priorities from phase three, maybe to go on to phase four, with the limited amount of money we have, and the wastewater plant itself is five hundred thousand, and the rest of the project could be five hundred thousand. So, we're talking about possibly investigating of, of kind of swapping all around and going to the wastewater plant and fixing that issue, because, sorry. So, that, that's something that, that we really need to investigate, we need to get with Larry and, and find out where exactly our priorities are right now, and how serious each one of the issues are. I brought up, if you remember right, we talked about last time, in, in the industrial park with all this new stuff coming out there with the Watley, and the Ford dealership, and the New Holland dealership, and possibly some other businesses coming in out there, that, do we have enough electricity out there to fulfill our commitment? And we also have to run underground electricity to the Watleys, we've agreed to their water and sewer to them, we don't know what that's gonna cost. So, I'm concerned if we spend all this money on phase three and phase four, and what if we come up and have a big need for electrical use out there in the, the park out there, what are we gonna do? Because we're gonna be out of money. So, and then there's, there's AMI, we've got one point seven five million dollars set aside for the new electric meters and water meters, so, I don't know that, it, it's just my opinion, we'll open this to discussion, but it's, it's my opinion that I need a lot more information about where our priorities ought to be right now, before we start spending this, this money, considering our monies are really limited right now. And after talking to, to Russ today, our ability to borrow money is, is narrowing, you know, without it being a loan that we can just pass on to our customers. So, I want to open it up to discussion, Bryce, do you have anything to add?
Well, you know, I, I love, I love projects, you know, so, I mean, I'd love to do the AMI project, and, because we said we were going to, and I've talked to the bond lawyer to find out, you know, is, is that capital improvement, or can we, can we switch it? You know, we've talked about that, and that has been a priority for a long time, I know it's been a priority for Dixie and for the people that get bit, and, and for folks that would like to know in real time what kind of water use, you know, they have, and leaks and all, and we've considered that a very, very important thing that we needed to get done, but everything needs to be, you know, put in place, and if there's a higher priority, fine, but what I did is, at the last meeting, you guys said, well, how much more do we have to do to complete the, the master drainage plan? It was a good question. So, I called up Blaine and said, how much more do we have to do to complete it? And he said, about a million more dollars. And he said, one part is, is quite urgent, because Vernon, they've told us, apparently, there's a lift station there, and there were three pumps in it, two of them don't work and haven't worked for a while, and one of them, they've just retuned, like in the last Earl's government, that in the last, in the last couple of months, but that whole thing and the headworks needs to be replaced, and that's a half a million dollars.
If you did have to cut you out, if y'all remember that when David Payne was the manager, he was talking about rebuilding things.
And that, and, and that is, if you want to talk about what we gotta do, that's a mandatory, I mean, that's a, that's to make that operation work, and then we have, so that's a half a million, and then we have a half a million to correct the Bill Stroller line, you know, that he brought up at the last meeting with the manholes and all, and that, and that finishes the master, you know, the, the master sewer plan that we spent money to get, and that we said, I love that, let's finish it, but, you know, we gotta come up with the, with the dough. Now, I have shown you, and we got the call from the Water Resource Board, and, and they said that because this line, it does have some discharge, it absolutely qualifies for these dollars, and what I did is I tried to put a number on it, just to let you know, if we borrowed a million and a half dollars, and, and the other half, I said it was a million, the other half is kind of to cover the rest of phase three, I know we found the source for it, but I'm getting, but we had other reasons for that money, okay, so let's just say that we said, look, the users ought to pay for this, because this is a utility project, and it's a long-time utility project, and it's got a long time, you know, payback, and so let's say we borrowed a million and a half dollars at twenty years, that adds four dollars to the adder fee, you know, when we passed this to do the master drainage study, we, we, we created a six-dollar adder fee to, to sewer, a flat adder fee, when, when it's paid off, it's gone, well, we can finish it for four more dollars per month on, on the bill, with the users paying for it, but that finishes, so we've got the design for it, we can get the permits for it, and we can finish sewer, that won't absolutely finish, but it will finish the whole backbone of, of what sewers in town, I think that's important, you know? I think what Bill has, has talked about is the Watley obligations, and there are obligations that we haven't, that we haven't nailed down, underground electric, much more expensive, we've got to, we've got to connect, you know, sewer line over to the various locations and water, it's gonna be a big, it's gonna be a big boom for the community, and then we have to talk about, I mean, we, we should talk about, okay, what's next, you know, I mean, have a little bit of money so that we can take care of what's next, and what next could be an economic development deal, or it could be something, so, you know, I'm kind of big on borrowing at the lowest interest rate that I've seen in my career, you know, I mean, really, really low interest rate, to take care of things that are good for twenty, thirty, forty years, that are subject to a plan that you guys commissioned, let's finish it. So, that's one way to look at it, the other way is that we lost Walmart, and, 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 you know, and that we're down. Huh?
We've had the hospital.
Oh, we've, we've got the hospital transaction that we've got to ante up, you know, the ante up period is coming, but how good was that to continue it, and I understand it's going very well, so, you know, we can look at it as problems or as solutions, it would require a public assistance, I would not say, you know, I'd say that, but I'd say that you go, look, we've been working on this for years, and now we have the ability to accomplish it all, and pay for it over a period of time, that, that, that's the other side, Russ, of course, wants us to be frugal.
Conservative.
Conservative, and, and I say, let's, let's do the projects that we set out to do, but, but that's why they don't put me in charge of the money.
There's enough moving things in this list of projects that I can't get my head around which ones a half, what, million and a half, and which ones a million, and which ones three hundred thousand, so what I would like to see is, I would like to see y'all sit down and go through the projects, list them out, do the combinations and how we're going to pay for them, and bring it back to us in a spreadsheet format, or whatever you think, and explain it to us with the different, including the addition of a new trans, uh, power station on the west side.
And that may not be, that may not be needed, but I asked Larry to do some engineering studies.
And I think, I think everybody all.
I think we need to have another planning session with all that information.
I think so too. I think so too.
But, but it's tough to have a planning session when Watley's building a building out there right now, I mean, we need to, we gotta make sure, and, and like ditch which, I, my concern is that, that electricity goes a loop and comes to ditch which, what if we cut it short, and then, you guys have power problems, you know, we, we got to have a, OMPA, I'm sure will come and do.
Let me rephrase that, sooner than, rather than later, because we also have budgeting coming up for next year, so.
That needs to happen soon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping the city manager has already made contact with OMPA and, and asked for some kind of study to be done, engineering study done, but.
In other words, we don't have enough information to make a decision.
Absolutely, and this was just, and this was just put on there for discussion, but it's what you asked for, and, and it's what we were able to come up with, you, you do have some numbers.
I do, I do, I just, I didn't print it out for everyone, but.
Go, go ahead and explain it just briefly so that they have that, and then, and then, if you could, then we'll, we'll give it to them in paper.
Yeah, so, three main sources of revenue that we have right now, we've got the, the two thousand seventeen bonds that were issued for the AMI, AMR project, okay, about one point seven million dollars sitting there untouched. Okay. And then we've got about six hundred, six hundred and ten thousand dollars, give or take some, that is the remainder of, as Phil said, from the street bonds that we did, we took the street bonds, we slid three quarters of it into street project, one quarter of it into capital improvements, so six, twelve there.
Okay.
And on the top of my head, I can't remember what the other piece was.
Meredith, did we?
The sewer.
Did, did we take a look, did, did we take a look at our contract, our current contract?
Not on Evans, I don't have those full numbers.
With Evans, because I want to take a look at the contract we have with Evans, because that's not all paid for, and, and make sure.
Make sure we're covered.
And make sure that we're covered there, so, absolutely.
Plus, out of that six hundred thousand, we potentially have hospital funding that's going to have to go one way or the other, so in total, sorry, I was gonna try to pull my email, and about one point five million dollars, or, sorry, two point five million dollars, okay, then you've got phase three. Okay, then you've got phase three of your sewer, which is about a half a million dollars. Phase four of your sewer, which is a million dollars. And then rebidding on those AMI meters, which if we get lowest bid, again, we're around 1.3. So that brings us to about a little over 200,000 dollars short as far as revenue sources and projects. That does not include the electric project that Bill brought up. And also, we don't have firm numbers on phase four, which Blaine has said about a million dollars. That's what I plugged in.
And if I recall correctly, out of the 610 pot that you're talking about, if it didn't go towards streets, we had to have a super majority.
You are correct. You are correct on that. Yes.
So, something else to throw in the queue there.
And it's my understanding that, I mean, we, we all want the AMI, you know, AMR, whatever the meters. But that, that money, the 1.75 million is AMI or capital improvements.
And capital improvements, but Bryce has talked to the bond attorney, we don't need to.
If we're gonna change it, I need, we probably are gonna have to pass something. So yeah, I mean, I think it could be done. It's just we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to check with the lender and then we'll have to approve the rest.
What's our return on investment for the AMI?
Well, I think we're gonna make, I think, I think.
I mean, the return on investment alone kind of puts that a little higher on the priority list.
I would totally agree with you and we talked about that today.
The others aren't.
The other ones don't have return on investment.
But.
But.
What if the lift station goes down? What if we kill ditch which because we can't get no power to them?
So there's, there's three projects.
I would say, if I, if I had to choose, the AMI is gonna go at the bottom.
So you, you see where I'm coming from? I wanna, I wanna lay it out there saying, this is what happens if you do this and this is what happens if you do this. And we flip the combinations and we, we figure out what is the most economical and best result for the community.
Totally, totally agree.
Priorities.
AMI has been on my list from way back, so I think it's got priorities just from time.
Seniority, it has seniority.
I don't think that a, that a city council meeting is the proper venue to do that. We need a meeting where we can sit down and say, okay, and bring it back.
A day, a day to talk about the details.
A day to talk about the details.
But I think we also need to have good numbers coming into that.
Yes.
So in that, we need management.
To make.
To.
Prioritize.
To get some numbers in.
And give us some numbers.
Well, that's what trips us up. We didn't have good numbers at the last meeting and thought we did. And, and so we need to. Get educated on this side.
And we've got ditch which and they know what their usage is and what their loads are.
Well, OMPA will have all that information.
But we don't, does OMP have all of that information on what's happening on the west side that'll drag that down? And how do we make this that work?
I think the engineering, their engineering group can do that study and figure all that out. And maybe we got everything we need out there, but we just, I just don't want any mud in our face. I don't want all that to develop out there and then we can't provide our, our customers with power.
I agree, I agree.
So, okay, any more discussion on 13? I think management has some kind of directive. I don't know who management is, not Dixie.
Well, we've got two up on here.
And sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Soon, soon as the.
I'll, I'll, I'll go talk to Larry. We'll have that discussion.
Well, we have most, we have most of the numbers now.
I know, I think we need, we need costs on the electric.
Right, and we can.
But other than that, I think we've got all the pieces.
Yeah.
Good.
But we worked on it all day today. And the reason I, I put it on the agenda is because we came up so short the last time. And we needed to assure you that we did have the money for that. But then, you know, try to show you that there's a lot of moving pieces here and that, and that we need to make sure what that we attacked, well, we need to attack. What, what the council wants us to do.
Yeah.
I would still like to see the, I mean, I know we've talked about it here, but see the maps for the master plans and everything else at this meeting that we're talking about too.
I agree.
Of, of the sewer?
The sewer and.
We had a map last time and it was so small, you couldn't make anything out of it.
It wouldn't hurt to see power and for, you know, any kind of mapping on that and, and all that.
I have a, I have a question. We may have talked about this today. Do you have to call, uh, your people on that CDVG grant to see if we can transfer it from phase three to phase four?
You know, I, uh, I don't think we can.
So we might be in a bind there anyway.
Yeah, we may be in a bind there.
It was only 150,000. How much was it?
169, essentially 170,000.
It sounds like if we don't fix the sewer, lift station, whatever.
No matter what gets to it.
No matter, no matter what, we need to move on that puppy.
Yeah.
Because that's the one that.
Because David Payne was talking about that whenever a lot, whenever he was, or interim.
Yeah, and it's been eight months since then. So, um, that one, if, if I were gonna throw it on the priority list, that one, no matter what the rest of the decisions are, that one needs to be taken care of. So we can't have EPA come down on our heads.
DEQ.
The DEQ also. All right, well, thank you. Let's move on to item 14. Consider approval of professional service agreement with audit ending June 30th, 2018 with CBEW Professional Group LLC. You guys have done our audits, what, two years now or three?
This should be your fourth.
Fourth, really? Wow. So anyway, they've done a great job. The Meachams and Dixie really like these people. So I would encourage us to, uh, approve the agreement with them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I, there's, um, on our agenda, it says 15.100.
Yeah, there should be a comma there.
Yeah. Sorry, it's nitpicky, but it's.
No, you're right.
A comma inside of a period. Should be.
Should be a comma.
Okay.
We didn't have Meredith do that, we had Bryce do that.
We're just saying 15, maximum 15 dollars.
Yeah, maximum 15 dollars and 100 cents.
All right, roll call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Gilbert. Yes. Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Iker.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Uh, consider approval of a professional services agreement with Monsoon Consulting for the sanitary sewer capital improvement project, phase three. Uh, this is required for our CDVG grant.
He's already done the work. We just need to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve.
What'd you just say?
He, he's already done the work. This is really, this is phase three. I mean, this is what we went out to, this is what we, you know, that we're getting the grant for. They just, he's our city engineer. And as our city engineer, he does, he, you know, he does work for us at a rate, okay? But.
That just sounded real funny.
But the state, but the state and the CDVG, they want to see a contract, okay? So now we're giving them a contract for what.
What he's already done.
For what he's already done, you know?
Approve the stuff he's already done. I just found it real funny the way.
No, no, I agree and I, I thank you for asking that. But, you know, he is our, he, he's, he's our city engineer and they like to see contracts.
And we like to have them.
Yeah.
Second.
Is it one or two or three?
Roll, uh, are we done with discussion? Roll call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Gilbert. Yes. Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Iker.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Stroll.
Yes. Jim, is it one, two or three?
I don't know, can't tell. Not counting those, it doesn't matter.
Consider, uh, item number 16. Consider approval of payment of invoice in the amount of 2,708.65 to MKEC for pre-construction engineering services on the 2018 street improvement projects. There's a whole list of projects here that they've done. And, uh, the agenda is in your package, so, I mean, uh, the invoice is in your package, so. What would y'all like to do?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Gilbert. Yes. Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Iker.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Stroll.
Yes. Item number 17, new business. Any new business become before, or needs to come before the council this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to item number 18. Consider convening into executive session to discuss negotiations with the police and fire collective bargaining units pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2.
Motion to convene.
Second.
Roll call please.
Calder.
Yes.
Gilbert. Yes. Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Iker.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Stroll.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to reconvene.
Uh...
Sorry.
I will entertain the motion to reconvene.
Second.
Go call please.
Colar.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
I heard Small.
Yes.
Is there any action that needs to be taken place due to executive session?
Motion is adjourned.
Second.
Go call please.
Colar.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
I heard Small.
Yes. Yes.